Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to call the public forum to order. It is 6:00 PM. Today is June 13th, 2022, and my name is Chris Pia for the Town of Stratford, Chairman. Ms. Paquette is going down to check the sign-up sheet. Just a friendly reminder, for those of you who have signed up, as we do every month, per the council rules of procedure, everyone is granted three minutes, and if you could just state your name and address when you come to the microphone, we'd appreciate it. First person signed up is Kevin Moore. Mr. Moore?
All right, Kevin Moore, 50 Morningside Drive, also representing the Stratford Historical Society. It's over at 967 Academy Hill. I thank you for this opportunity to speak with all of you. I'd like to speak to you about Pollinator Week that's coming up June 20th through the 26th, and a special event on June 25th, I believe, that deserves your support. Pollinator Week was initiated and managed by the Pollinator Partnership, and 14 years ago, the U.S. Senate's unanimous approval and designation of a week in June as National Pollinator Week marked a necessary step towards addressing the urgent issue of declining pollinator populations. Pollinator Week has now grown into an international celebration promoting the valuable ecosystem services provided by all our pollinators. Without pollinators, we can't feed ourselves. One out of three bites of food we eat are the result of animal-assisted pollination. Yet, there is a severe decline of pollinators. The monarch butterfly alone, 80 to 90 percent decrease in overwintering. Our landscapes have been chopped up, fragmented through urban and suburbanization, much of which I know will be discussed either today or in the near future about Holly Lane. The problem is, we can no longer support sustainable populations in our wildlife or our isolated parks and preserves alone. Luckily, there is a solution. If we begin to manage our own yards organically with native plantings, we can use them to connect our parks and preserves, creating crucial corridors in wildlife. Throughout Stratford, we have seen gardens that have addressed this, from established gardens such as Will's Garden over at Shakespeare, the Sister Cities Friendship Garden at Booth, Stratford Animal Control, and others, to some of our most recent installations such as over at Longbrook, which was a tough battle but ultimately successful, and it was the first pollinator garden at a public park here in Stratford. Also, the Stratford Library, our gardens, the Justin House, and even right here at the Town Hall, where the Beautification Committee recently planted pollinators at the east entrance. The movement is alive and well. During Pollinator Week on June 25th, starting at 2:00 at the Justin House Gardens, we are unofficially officially declaring it Pollinator Day. Our newly-formed garden club is having its inaugural meeting, and we are hosting a first-time gathering ever, as far as I know, with all the garden managers from Shakespeare, Booth, Animal Control, Longbrook, our Beautification Committee, and Lordship. We're going to have a keynote speaker representing the Pollinator Pathway that us and Longbrook Park have just recently become a part of. The gathering of our special public gardens, many that are in your specific districts, will be a time that we can not only honor and thank these hard-working gardeners, but also maybe a chance to join forces, work together, help each other, and further support our pollinators. As the Pollinator Pathway states, even the smallest green space, like a flower box, a curb strip, can be a part of the pathway.
If you wrap it up, Mr. Moore.
Here in Stratford, we have done just that. We ask for your support, and please stop by on June 25th, 2:00, at the Justin House Gardens, and celebrate our pollinators. Thank you.
All right. I don't have anybody else signed up. Is there anybody here who would like to speak? I'm being a little light tonight, but I'd like to keep it to six. Nope, seeing none. We'll close the public forum at 6:04 PM. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to get going. Today is Monday, June 13th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM sharp. My name is Chris Pia, Town Council Chairman, and I am calling to order the regularly-scheduled council meeting for the Town of Stratford. The first item is going to be the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I would ask the councilwoman from the 4th District, Ms. Rice, to lead us.
I would first, oh, sorry. I would first like to take a moment of silence to honor our first responders and military personnel who have dedicated and lost their lives protecting our safety, our freedom, and our democracy. Father, I pray for all of the families who lost a loved one, and especially those who lost by gun violence. I pray for strength and comfort during these difficult times for their families. I also pray that our nation finds the courage to solve this issue of gun violence. I also wanted to thank you for the opportunity for the town council to come together again. I ask that you give us your wisdom and knowledge to lead Stratford in the right direction according to your will. In the holy and precious name of Yeshua, I pray, Lord. Amen. And one last thing, I just wanted to take a moment of a privilege. I wanted to take a brief moment to acknowledge the Juneteenth holiday. I'm happy that we are celebrating it. As a member of the Ados community, I wanted to state it's not only important to acknowledge the date the slaves were freed, but the debt this country owes those slaves for every opportunity gained as a result. So I just wanted to say thank you, and just that brief mention, thank you so much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is going to be the approval of the minutes from the regularly-scheduled meeting of May 9th, 2022, and the special meeting of May 11th, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Mr. O'Brien, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Dancho. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is going to be ceremonial presentations and awards. We're very fortunate and lucky here in the Town of Stratford tonight to have somebody who's really important in the country now. So, we, the mayor and I are going to go up front and introduce Ms. Deborah LaRoche-Walls, who is fortunate and obviously very qualified to win the Miss Connecticut Senior America of 2022. Let's give her a round of applause, please.
So I just want to read some of the proclamation because it gives you the history of the pageant. The Miss Connecticut Senior America Pageant was founded in 1979 and is the world's first and foremost pageant to emphasize and give honor to women who have reached the age of elegance, and Deborah is most certainly elegant. And it is a search for the gracious lady, and Deborah, you're also very gracious. You're a wonderful person, you're not only beautiful but inside and out, who best exemplifies the dignity, maturity, and inner beauty of all senior Americans. And the Miss Senior American Philosophy, America Philosophy, is based on the belief that seniors are the foundation of America and our most valuable treasure. And it is upon their knowledge, experience, and resources that the younger generation has the opportunity to build a better society. And there were 10 contestants in this year's Miss Connecticut Senior American Competition. Ms. Deborah LaRoche-Walls was awarded and granted the crown, and the Miss Senior America Competition will be taking place in September in Hershey, Pennsylvania. Don't cry. So now therefore I, the Honorable Laura Arhoidik, Mayor of Stratford, by the virtue of authority vested in me by the town, do hereby recognize this 13th of June as Miss Connecticut Senior America Day.
and I would always get an invitation to come to the Sterling House to represent Briarwood College. So every time I go by now the Sterling House, I say, Stuart, there's the Sterling House. And to think that here is my life in Stratford, and how proud I am to be representing this town. I adore Laura, and of course, the blessing that came into my life, Stuart Walls, Mr. Stratford. Everywhere we go, he's known, and I just feel such blessings. So I'm very grateful when I go in September to say that I represent Stratford, Connecticut.
So under item, under Section 3, we have a couple items for informational purposes only, letters of resignation from a Rita Sikatia from the Beautification Committee, and a resignation from a Joe Karybski of Inland Wetlands. Under Item 3.2, council chairman appointment for informational purposes only, reappointing John Waite to be reappointed as an alternate member to Inland Wetlands with a term that expires May 31st, 2026. Next item, under Mayor's Report. Report from the mayor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair. As Ms. Rice noted, as Councilwoman Rice noted, we have observed National Police Week, which was May 11th to the 17th, and Police Officers Memorial Day on May 15th, National EMS Week, which was May 15th to the 21st, National Public Works Weeks, which was May 15th to 20th, Pride Month, which is all of June, Armed Forces Day, it was May 21st, and the DDA Anniversary, which was June 6th. Activities at the Baldwin Center, they are pleased to invite adults 60 years and older to start their day with a lively conversation and tasty food, which was newly-launched by the Baldwin Breakfast Club weekdays, and that starts at 9:00 AM in the morning. The menu changes daily with delicious dishes such as a Spiced Pear Overnight Oats, French Toast Sticks, Scrambled Eggs and Sausage. Kindly register in advance by calling the Baldwin Center. Donations of $3 are gratefully accepted, but no one is turned away for inability to make a donation. I'm sorry, inability to make a donation. The South End Community Center's cerise staff, and we have our Ms. Ty Sims right over there, Owen Tammy Trojanowski, your hair looks great, Tam. They had their center cerise staff and leaders in training that's starting their orientation on June 27th to welcome campers on July 5th for six weeks of traditional day camp activities, academic enrichment, and social emotional learning. On the health update, we had a variety of vaccination clinics held on the 4th, May 4th, 11th, 18th, and June 1st at the Birdseye Municipal Complex. You'll probably notice that the Birdseye Complex is getting a new roof, if you've been by there. They, the Health Department also organized and participated in a public health radiological response education program with the CT Connecticut Region 1 Partners. They partnered with Griffin Health to host pop-up vaccination clinics at the Baldwin Center on May 24th, hosted four walk and talk events in partnership with the Stratford YMCA, where parents, caregivers of young children got to visit different Stratford locations each week, Short Beach, Roosevelt, Longbrook, and Shakespeare Park, and hear from the professionals about important child development topics including nutrition, growth, mental health, stress, anxiety, and health safety. They participated in a statewide emergency medical preparedness exercise with the Public Safety Partners and the EOC, and practiced town communication and response activities using a national hurricane scenario. If you're ever with Andrea Bosfane, you'll know that she is counting how many days are left in hurricane season. The Health Department began planning for a Senior Health and Wellness Expo in partnership with the Baldwin Senior Center, and that event will take place on October 21st. They launched a townwide survey related to the COVID-19 vaccine and people's perceptions and hesitancies surrounding the vaccine for different age groups. The survey also asked about knowledge and familiarity with the Stratford Health Department, specific media campaigns such as billboards, posters, social media image that were launched during the height of the pandemic in response. The survey was debuted at Main Street Festival and is being launched online as well. They are organizing focus groups at the Baldwin Center and South End Community Center to ask similar questions in the focus group format. On the economic development front, the Army Engine Plant is scheduled for conveyance in mid-July. I think you've heard that from me, from June, July, I hope it doesn't go to August, but it's a little bit of a moving target, but they say mid-July right now. Regarding Center School, the Planning Commission did an A24 review and gave a favorable recommendation for the property project, made also the suggestion that include a 10% set aside for affordable housing. The Department of Economic and Community Development at the state has reiterated that the end-use must be a mixed-use transit-oriented district project, must be having they, having funded the demolition and the remediation of the property. The African-American Museum is considered a commercial mixed property, so we qualify for the project from their standpoint. PUCD, which is the Plan of Conservation and Development, had a technical advisory meeting on May 31st with all of our department heads. The workshop dates for the public are being scheduled for the fall. And the town is waiting on DOT for Complete Streets Phase 1 for the final design approval. The deadline was June 10th. We're still waiting, but we anticipate it any day now. Once DOT is signed off, the project can begin, which is funded by our local LOTZIP grant. We had a variety of ribbon cuttings. The Reader's Block, Tandrea Mobins is 2420 Main Street behind, in Colonial Square, and that was on May 19th. And the Connecticut Window and Film Company, which is owned by Dave Silverstein, and that's on 1895 Stratford Avenue, that ribbon cutting was June 8th, and they're located right near Nourish. We have some recent events. I appointed Jermaine Atkinson as Fire Chief effective July 1st. Exit 33 on Interstate 95 was fully opened on May 13th. Booth Park opening day was May 15th. Stratford Community Foundation Grant for Summer Enrichment Programs at the South End Community Center, we're going to, you're going to hopefully approve that grant today, but that was $18,000, $18,000 to support children five through 12 in the Summer Cerise Program. Thank you, Ty. Thank you, Greg, for putting that together. We raised the flag of Haiti in Town Hall on May 18th for Haitian Flag Day with Stratford resident Marie Denis Chou. Armed Forces Day on May 21st, Larry Chigarelli and Mike Downs attended the State Armed Forces Luncheon on behalf of Stratford. We had a wonderful veterans breakfast on May 25th at the Zano's Four Seasons. The Memorial Day Ceremony was held at Academy Hill and the parade thereafter, which was on May 30th. The Pride Flag Raising was June 1st. Nourish Farms Open Blooms fundraiser was also June 1st. And then we had, on June 2nd, we received the notice that $23 million for additional remediation for the Raymark project was awarded, and we had a field headquarters ribbon cutting. On Main Street, on Main Street Festival was June 4th, and Stratford celebrates spring and summer season, and was kicked off on June 4th with the Main Street Festival. The event was well-attended by Stratford residents and our neighboring communities. It was perfect weather and added to great success for the event. Thanks to Stratford Rotary Club, Stephanie Phillips, and Pat Petusky for organizing a great day, and a huge thanks to Milford Bank for being the event sponsor. Stratford Museum Day was June 11th, and Stratford Hidden Gems Campaign, which highlights our natural resources in nine museums, launched on June 11th to coincide with the inaugural Stratford Museum Day. June 11th also marks Connecticut Open House Day. The event in Stratford was sponsored by the Economic and Community Development Commission, and the Hidden Gem marketing campaign consists of printed postcards and posters which include a QR code. Scanning the QR code brings you to an interactive map, providing information and links to our hidden gems. And the interactive map can also be accessed by visiting wwwstrattfordhiddengems.com. On June 11th, all the museums were opening, and it waived all the entrance fees. Hats Off Out to the Roses also happened on June 11th from 5:00 to 7:00 at Booth Park as a little fundraiser for the Friends of Booth. And the Stratford Farmers Market opened today at Paradise Green. We have some upcoming events. The Juneteenth Ceremony, as Councilwoman Rice mentioned, is 9:00 on Friday, June 17th, and the councilwoman will be raising the flag. Shakespeare Market, the next dates are June 19th, July 3rd, and July 17th. Make Music Day will again happen at Shakespeare Property from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, and this year it's Tuesday, June 21st. Clean Air Planting Event at Booth Park is happening in June on the, from 11:30 to 3:00. The Fourth of July Fireworks Display is scheduled for Thursday, June 30th, with a rain date of Tuesday, June 5th at Short Beach. Stratford resident stickers must be displayed to gain entry into Short Beach. The show begins at sunset approximately 9:00 PM. Blues on the Beach is scheduled for July 23rd, Rain or Shine at Short Beach. In preparation, the beach will be closed at 7:00 PM on Friday, June 22nd, and through Saturday, the 23rd, 10:00 PM, and then we'll open it up for people to join us on the beach. Stratford resident stickers must be displayed in the cars to enter the beach, and Stratford residents may enter the beach at 10:00 AM. The bands will perform from noon until 9:00 PM. As I mentioned before, we had the retirement of Stratford Fire Chief Brian Lampart with the appointment of the new chief, Jermaine Atkinson, and then I hope you would consider the appointment of David Wright as a town historian. And that's the message. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next item on the agenda is going to be questions for the mayor. Open it up to the council for any questions. Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Chris. Mayor Arhoidik, you mentioned the Center School and the African-American Museum satisfied a mixed-use development from the state. Does that make the whole property eligible for tax abatements from the town's point of view?
Your tax abatement code, counselor, does not include residential property. So, no. The entire property is not open. However, the below-grade parking would be. You're welcome. And the museum's already tax exempt. It's a nonprofit. Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next up, Attorney Hodgson, Town Attorney's Report, sir.
Thank you, Council Chair. Report for May's brief. We recovered $4,300 for property damage claim to town property. We also opened up two other property damage claims for damage to a struck police vehicle and a struck fire emergency vehicle. We had two tax appeals. We opened up two light files, and we have three FOI requests. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. Next, under ordinance, Item 6.1.1. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
Item 6.1.1. I move that the ordinance appropriating $12,033,000 for various public improvements in equipment in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2223, that the first reading of this ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Motion by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman O'Brien. Any discussion on this? As Ms. Dancho said, we're sending it to ordinance for a public hearing and work. Any other discussion? Nope. Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes 9-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is going to be Item 6.1.2. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
Item 6.1.2, an ordinance authoring the issuance of $12,033,000 in bonds of the town to meet the appropriation for the various public improvements and equipment in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2223, and the pending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose. Hold on, I got to get to the page. That the first reading of this ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Motion by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman O'Brien. Any discussion on this item? Ms. Kim.
Thank you, Chris. So this is an ordinance that will also be going to the ordinance committee.
We're sending it to ordinance tonight, and for a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda to resolutions, I'll entertain a motion for Item 6.2.1.
Mr. Chairman, Item 6.2.1. I move a resolution regarding the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program.
Motion made by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr., I saw Bill first. Mr. O'Brien gets a second on that one. Any discussion on this? So, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is Item 6.2.2. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move 6.2.2 Resolution Regarding Taxes Transfer Into Tax Suspense.
Made, a motion made by Councilwoman O'Brien. Do I have a second?
Laura Dancho, second.
Second by Councilwoman Dancho. Any discussion on this light item?
Hi.
Ms. Rice.
Yes, my question is, are there any additional consequences or penalties for the, for the taxpayers as a result of moving these items into the taxes suspense account?
So let me call Finance Director Ms. Sebo to the podium, and you can ask her specifically.
According to state statute, we're required to move what's deemed uncollectible taxes to the suspense account and take them off our books, reducing our balance sheet holding for outstanding tax, but we can still collect those, and there are no additional penalties. They just would pay the normal penalties for being late.
Any other questions or any other discussion on this item?
Thank you.
Seeing none, you're welcome. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is Item 6.2.3. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
Item 6.2.3, I move a resolution regarding security improvements at Franklin Elementary School. Second.
All right, motion, motion's been made by Councilwoman Dancho. I have a second by Councilwoman Sutton. Any discussion on this? I just want to thank the Public Safety Director, Mr. Chigarelli, for working with the administration on this. I believe that these next two are going to be the last couple that we need for all of town, so thank you to the administration for that. Any other further discussion?
Chris.
Ms. Kim.
Can someone from the committee describe, have we done the other schools? So Franklin is like at the end, or is Franklin requiring special? So Franklin is like at the end, or is Franklin requiring special?
Mr. Timniak, do you want to just, you're familiar with this?
Yeah.
Good, Madam Mayor.
There are two schools that have not, have not been, have what we call as man traps since the protection from entering the school, and that's Wilcox and Franklin. And so, in the absence of this protection, what we have is, as a physical person there, stopping people from just entering the school. Kind of like you would have a fire watch if your fire protection systems went down. Now you have a physical person there. But we'll let Mr. Timniak and Ms. Sarah talk about the rest of it.
I mean, I could spend a little time adding on to that, but that would seem pretty perfect to me.
Renee, anything to add?
The only, the only thing I can add to that were, these two schools were a little bit more complicated to put a man trap, they require a bit more construction than the other schools, and that's why these are the last two to be done. They are going to cost a little bit more, and they're a little more architecturally kind of challenging, yes, to figure it out. There's going to have to be some rearranging of offices and stuff like that to create this man trap area.
Follow-up.
We stand corrected, it's a person trap. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Poissons.
Go ahead, go ahead, Greg.
So the expected configuration is not, not a new exterior room or holding place, but for example, in the hallway through the main front door of Franklin would be where the person trap would be constructed?
I haven't seen the final designs, but I don't know that to be the case at both schools. There may need to be some additional exterior construction to create the space.
Any other further discussion? Yes, Ms. Sheik.
Thank you. My only question is, for the timeline of these two projects, would they be ready before the beginning of the next school year?
No, no, they won't be. The reason why we're putting these in front of you is because this language is needed for reimbursement through the state, and so we are actively working on the application right now, but it would be a next 2023 summer construction project.
Thank you, I just have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
So what is in place now for those two schools? Is that what, Mayor Hoidic? Thank you. So we just have a constant police presence? Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, it's not, it's not a police officer, it's a security person.
Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.4, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sutton.
I'd like to move 6.2.4, A Resolution Regarding Security Improvements at Wilcox and Elementary School.
Motion to approve by Ms. Sutton, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman O'Brien, any discussion? I think last discussion covered that one. Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is item 6.
6.2.
There should be a .5 in there. I just noticed that. So, as listed on the agenda, as listed, I'll entertain a motion for item 6.2.6 as listed in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
Item 6.2.6, I move a resolution regarding Connecticut Department of Energy, Emergency Services and Public Protection Diversity of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Subgrant for Flood Prevention Project at Water Pollution Control Facility.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilwoman Dancho. I have a second by Councilwoman O'Brien. Any discussion on this item? Ms. Kent.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. The grant is fantastic, I'm looking at the town match of 4.8, and presuming that's going to come from the WPCA. Did we anticipate that the new WPCA user fee that would provide what we thought was a half million dollars a year of banked money? Would that be sufficient to cover the cost of the town share?
Mr. Timniak, when you have a moment, sir, to answer Ms. Kent's question?
I would, I mean, it's up to the council, but it would be a WPCA project, so it should fall under the WPCA umbrella. It would be something, we would make the decision after we received the actual grant on where the match would come from. So I think this is probably something we will be discussing in three to six months-ish when the money comes in on how we would go about doing it.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.7, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sutton.
I'd like to move item 6.2.7, A Resolution Regarding Connecticut State Department of Education Grant Supporting South End Community Center's Summer Soiree, Summer Enrichment Program 2022.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Sutton, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dancho. Any discussion on this? I know Ty's here, this is the annual grant that we get every year, so it's great. Any other discussion? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is going to be under New Business, item 7.1, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move 7.1, The Appointment of the Independent Auditor, Clifton Larson, as stated in the agenda.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman O'Brien, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Dancho. Any discussion? It's an annual thing, so, nope, okay. We'll see, no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is item 7.2, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
7.2, I move for the renewal of the African American Museum lease, as stated in the agenda.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman O'Brien, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rice. Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sheik.
I just have a question of clarification, so I'm not opposed at all for renewing the lease for the African American Museum, but my question is, in regards to the comments before with the Center School redevelopment project, so looking forward, does that mean that the African American Museum will be staying at its current location for years to come and not move over to Main Street? Is that part of the, no?
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair, thank you, Councilor Sheik. No, this, this is just extending the lease where the African Museum is now for another year because we're working diligently on developing the Sterling Homestead, and then you'll all decide on that, you know, what money is spent, what lease terms are given to the African American Museum, should you decide to do all that. However, the space that the African Museum is in now is considered commercial space, and because of that, it qualifies for the mixed use of the housing at the TOD, and then the mixed use space for the museum, where the museum is now. You're welcome.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is item 7.3, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.3.1, be it resolved that the project manual for the solar panel project at Stratford High School be approved.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Poissons, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rice, Councilwoman Rice. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is item 7.3.2, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.3.2, the approval of Town Bid 2022-39 Town Hall Site Lighting to Pro Electric Incorporated of Bethel, Connecticut in the amount of $360,000.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Poissons, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Dancho. Any discussion on this item? Ms. Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. Could someone from the committee just overview the scope of this project? Interior, exterior, the number of lights, the extent of the project?
Mr. Poissons.
Renee.
Renee, I'm sorry. Ms. Sarah, if you don't mind, Public Works Director.
So this project is the replacement of the lamppost lights that go around the green here. We would be replacing those lights, the new lights will be LED. They'll also be a bit taller, which will provide more illumination on the green. The green is quite used now for a lot of events, so it'd be nice to have better lighting. Plus, these lampposts here, the wiring is so frayed that it's shorting out, and they're pretty much unusable, and they're electricity hogs because they're not LED. So those lampposts will be replaced, as will the lights to match on the exterior part of the building. So this is all exterior.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is item 7.3.3, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.3.3, the approval of Fire Headquarters Window Repairs and Refurbishment to Window Service Incorporated of Holliston, Mass. Mass in the amount of $14,212.51.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Poissons, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilwoman O'Brien, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is item 7.4.1, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I move that Reese Mitchell of Margarita Longbein is hereby reappointed to the Stratford Waterfront and Harbor Management Commission with the term expiring May 31st, 2027.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Dancho for item 7.1.4A. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman O'Brien, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Brian Yarmisch of Husatonic Avenue be and is hereby reappointed to the Stratford Waterfront and Harbor Management Commission with the term expiring May 31st, 2027.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Dancho for item 7.4.1B. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien again, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the, on the agenda is going to be item 7.5.1. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
7.5.1, Town Historian, I move that the mayor's appointment of David Wright as the town historian be and is hereby confirmed.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman O'Brien, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Sheik, second by Ms. Sheik. Any discussion on that?
Yes, hi, um, is it?
Hold on. Discussion on this, Ms. Rice?
I do have a brief question. Can you tell me a little bit about Mr. Wright? Seeing as that I'm new and I'm not familiar with him. Is it?
Madam Mayor, if you want to, Mr. Wright's been working for the town for many, many years in IT. He's a wealth of knowledge in terms of Stratford history, and is someone who's respected across all aisles.
Just curious about his background.
He knows, he knows everything about Stratford.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Sheik.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. Mr. Wright has been very helpful, available, and I think has gone above and beyond in my last term and this term, when we've had events or things of not knowing. And if anybody has a question, he's always happy to help and clarify, and will send you a whole list of references, and even connect you to our local library, which is great and awesome. So I'm happy that he's officially part of our town as a historian, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, let me just add also, if you ever want to hear the history of Roosevelt Forest, ask David to take you for a tour up there, and it'll be very interesting and enlightening.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any other discussion? All right, we'll vote on Mr. Wright. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Poissons, do I have a second? Second by Mr. O'Brien. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, motion passes 9-0, thank you all.